Good evening, everyone. It's the second day of July 2019 at 6:30 PM. We'd like to begin our city council meeting. As we begin, all city council meetings, we begin with a pledge of allegiance if you'll join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Ask our city clerk, he will read the roll call.
Harrington?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
O'Doherty?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
Stalder?
Here.
Weaver, absent. Gabriel?
Here.
And Shumway?
Here.
That is eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd like now to have our vice mayor go over considerations of changes and setting the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move that the following changes to the agenda be approved, moving 8E on the consent to 14A on the regular agenda. That's a resolution to appoint two members to the Albany County Tourism Joint Powers Board, and that any reference in items 13 and 14 on the regular agenda concerning Hardy Street Viaduct be changed to Snowy Range Bridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
I think I heard Counselor McKinney first, so it's been seconded by Counselor McKinney. All in favor of those changes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. So, now we have a proclamation.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can we submit that as changed?
I'm sorry. I think that may come later, doesn't it? So we've changed the agenda.
You have to do 4B.
Okay, now you have 4B where we submit as changed.
You bet. I would move that the agenda be submitted as changed.
Second.
Okay, so that's been... Thank you for that. So we have now that motion to submit the agenda as changed. Any second to that?
I second it.
Yes, Jane did.
Okay, Counselor Pierce has seconded that. So all in favor of that indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now the agenda has been set and the items changed have been approved on that. So now we have one proclamation, and I have asked our vice mayor, who attended the ceremony for this, to read the recognition proclamation that we have. So, Vice Mayor Gabriel.
Thank you once again, Mayor. Whereas the city of Laramie, Wyoming would like to recognize Navy Machinist Mate First Class George Hanson for his service to our country during World War II, and whereas MM First Class Hanson assigned to the battleship USS Oklahoma, December 7th, 1941, was attacked by Japanese aircraft and capsized in Pearl Harbor, resulting in the deaths of 429 crewmen, including Hanson. And whereas the Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency announced on December 17th of 2018 that the remains of Navy Machinist Mate First Class George Hanson was accounted for during additional testing of the unknown remains through dental and DNA analysis. Whereas a rosette will be placed next to his name on the walls of the missing to indicate he has been accounted for, and whereas a motorcade transported his remains on June 26th of this year from Denver International Airport to his hometown Laramie for burial on June 29th of 2019. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Pat Gabriel, acting on behalf of the Mayor Joe Shumway, do hereby proclaim July 2nd, 2019, as a day of recognition for Machinist Mate First Class George Hanson, and encourage residents to recognize his service and dedication to our country.
Then do you want me to present?
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Gabriel. This is a great honor for us to recognize Machinist Mate First Class George Hanson. And so we're going to pass this proclamation on to our Assistant City Clerk, Ryan Schufelt, and then he will make sure that the VFW or appropriate individuals receive this proclamation and copies for those that want to receive that. So anyway, this, I, as you probably know, the procession from DIA was, from what I understand from Counselor Schuster, is over two miles long, and there is, you know, obviously a great deal of respect that we have for their sacrifice and for what they have done for our country. Appreciate the vice mayor reading this, appreciate him being there to represent the city as well as our fire department, our police department, and many other citizens that were there, present to recognize that, you know, the great service that has been provided not only by Machinist Mate George Hanson, but all those that have served in the military. So, we're looking forward to the 4th of July when we can celebrate even more of the freedoms that we appreciate because we are a part of this great country. So, Assistant City Clerk, if you want to see this and then make sure it gets to the right hands. Thank you.
And Mayor, Counselor O'Doherty was also at the service.
Yes.
I'd like to recognize her for her attendance.
Counselor O'Doherty is on the phone, and we appreciate having her present there and also being with us today. Okay, now we have, the next item is the notice for a public hearing. If you will read the notice.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will hold the following public hearing at 6:30 PM on July 2nd, 2019, in the city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments or protests on the following. Original ordinance 1999 amending Title VI of Laramie Municipal Code amending Chapter VI of the LMC by changing sections 6.04.115, 6.06.040, 6.16.015, and 6.36.020. To add clarifying language concerning keeping livestock in the city limits, post-conviction penalties for vicious dog convictions, and procedures for reports of animal bites. All information relative to this matter is available for review at the City of Laramie City Clerk's office at 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. So at this time, we invite anyone that would like to to come forward and speak in favor or in opposition to this original ordinance number 1999 has been read. Okay, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and move on to announcements. Do we have any announcements from the city?
Mayor, no.
Okay.
Announcements this evening, thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, ask the council if there's anyone that would like to make any disclosures of any conflicts of interest.
Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Harrington.
Let's start with Counselor O'Doherty.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a conflict with the discussion of the Viaduct, so items 13 and 14, I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay, so noted. Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. My business has a contract with the tourism board, so I will recuse myself from 14A.
Okay, so noted. Any other disclosures from the council? Okay, ask the vice mayor if he would take us on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. I would move that the consent agenda be approved as changed, and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. So at this time, we'd ask our Assistant City Clerk to do roll call, and as, when it comes to yours, you can say yes on all items except the ones that you...
It is not on the consent agenda, so I think they can say yes to everything.
Counselor O'Doherty, yours is on the regular agenda too, so we're good. Okay, go ahead for the roll call on the consent agenda.
Okay. Pierce?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Weaver, absent. Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That is eight yeses and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so the consent agenda has been approved. Now we move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number 10, and I've asked Counselor Stalter to introduce this to us.
I move that council approve original ordinance number 1999 on second reading, amending Title IV of Laramie Municipal Code, adding clarifying language concerning keeping livestock in the city limits, post-conviction penalties for vicious dog convictions, and procedures for reports of animal bite.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Discussion by the council on item number 10. Okay, Counselor Pierce?
So I would like to offer an amendment, and so I move that section... All right. I move that section 6.04.115 be amended to add a fourth definition of livestock unit to read as follows: Or no more than a total of three, one of the following species or in combination, piglets, goats, or sheep, each under seven months of age, and unaccompanied by its mother.
Okay. Any second to the amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Okay, we have a second then by Counselor Harrington, so let's have discussion on the amendment. Counselor Pierce?
So as you might recall, last week, we talked about the fact that an adult female livestock animal can have, can be on a quarter of an acre with their offspring, right? And the discussion came up regarding the possibility of adding three smaller animal, bum animals, basically livestock animals. And so I worked with our attorney and Chief Stalder, and came up with this amendment that would allow for three baby goats, sheep, or pigs to also be allowed on the property. I mean, you couldn't have a mom with four kids and three others. It would just be three others up to seven months old. That's basically, basically it.
Maybe I, let me ask the Counselor Pierce or also our city attorney, does this include animals such as horses, llamas, just the ones mentioned?
Mayor, just the ones mentioned.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Counselor Schuster?
A question. After they've reached seven months old, do two of them have to leave?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes, Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You guys wanted to say yes? I mean, sorry.
I was just curious how we came up with the first number. I mean, it sounds like it was relatively easy to figure out an amendment, a compromise here. Is there just a standard in agriculture for acreage and animals, or did it just seem like, well, this is, this is an appropriate number? I'm sorry. That's an okay question for everybody.
We have someone from Animal Control that's going to give us some insight.
That's great.
I'm sorry, Officer Lang with Laramie Animal Shelter. With the revision of the ordinance that was keeping with the true form of the original ordinance, which was one livestock unit per quarter acre, and what we're looking at is space requirements for those type of animals, obviously goats, pretty small, six to seven month old pig is going to be relatively large in a quarter of an acre size-wise, just for comparison, is a very large yard in Laramie, or benefited there versus lots of areas. So it's more of an accepted space requirement for that animal, so they have plenty of room since they're not out on the prairie and out on pasture and that type of thing, so they will have adequate space. And then the seven months is most livestock animals kept for agricultural purposes, once they reach seven months are either past or at age to be sold or butchered.
All right. Yeah, and my question was, and I really appreciate that answer, Mr. Mayor. I think it's uncommon that even outside of city limits and rural areas, sometimes you'll see animals kept in smaller areas than that, not maybe for a long time, but occasionally. So I was just curious, appreciate the background, I think it's good to kind of go over these things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Stalder?
I'm sorry that you had to go back and sit down, I have another question for you. So how many cases of lots of goats in people's yards are we talking about?
So, right now, not a lot because we have the ordinance in place. The clarification with our ordinance, the revision that we did, right now, we don't have people with too many because we've got the ordinance in place, but the clarification that we're trying to make with the revision change was the verbiage left a loophole with baby animals under seven months that kind of gave them that exception to the quarter acre. So we wanted to make sure that they were included in that quarter acre, because right now, the way it's verbiaged is anybody could have, I'd say five or 10 or 15 baby goats if we don't change it. Anybody within the city limits could do that, because the way the verbiage is kind of gives them, doesn't put them under that quarter acre umbrella, if that makes sense.
So do you think that if we said three orphan bum goats, rather than just one livestock unit, would that create an enforcement problem for you when you're going out and saying, okay, it's seven months, now two of the goats have to go?
Typical people that have livestock, most of the baby animals that we deal with are forage-type projects that are usually going to be gone within that time period. So most of them that are of that age, either they're breeding, then they're sold, or they're forage projects that have reached age. Laramie, we're really, have a benefit, I think, some people don't, that we actually even allow livestock within the city limits. I've talked to many council members from other jurisdictions in the state that are even just trying to get chickens allowed and want to know, they're worried about noise and feces and what kind of complaints that we've received. So we're one of the few ones that allow both chickens and livestock to be allowed within the city limits. What's kept, I think, most people content is that space requirement that not anybody can have a cow in their yard, and they have to have that space available for that, for that animal, because that will reduce the amount of noise, odor, feces, all that kind of stuff, flies, feed that they have to keep for them, all that kind of stuff that goes with the livestock.
So do you think that three is a pretty reasonable number of orphan piglets?
Personally, is, is that a more of a personal question? You know, I...
I just, I'm not super familiar with that.
Yeah, you know, as far as you're looking at size, noise, general people, some people don't even want chickens in their neighborhood, some people feel that they should be able to have a lot more than that. So as a city, obviously, we try and find that median where we can kind of find that middle ground for everybody. Personally, a seven-month-old pig is past butcher weight and very large. So personally, do I want three of those in my neighbor's yard? No. Do I understand one? Do I understand goats? Yes. You know, there's a happy median in there. But that, like I said, quarter acre, we're lucky in Laramie. Throughout town, north, south, east, west, people have that quarter acre plus available to them that they would be able to fit into this livestock ordinance. So that's where we try and find that middle ground where we're not going to, we can still be good neighbors, but we can still kind of carry that agricultural heritage.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Pierce?
So I think part of the reason we settled on three is that goats and sheep are herd animals, right? And so they need pals, right? Just to be by themselves would be a problem. So that's why we settled on that. And I think we also talked, although we didn't talk about the size of a seven-month-old pig, we did, I guess I was thinking in my head, you know, the like the pot-bellied pigs, the smaller pigs. So if anybody's objecting to the size of the, I don't know, you know, like a Hampshire pig, I think that's right, you know, then I would certainly, if they want to do a friendly amendment to the amendment, that would be fine if that creates a problem. We did talk about noise when we met, and I tried explaining that certainly goats and sheep, you know, they go to bed at sundown and they get up at sunrise, and if there's something preying on them, like a fox or coyote or whatever, they're going to be noisy, no doubt, you know, snakes in the, you know, they get a little excited about stuff like that. But generally speaking, unless there's a problem with them, they're pretty quiet. So at least that's been my experience, and...
I think we're including comments in this, so does anyone want to make some comments before we go to the public? Or should we go to the public first?
I'm sorry.
Let's go to the public. Any questions or comments from the public regarding this amendment to the ordinance? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to council for comments. Let's start with Counselor Schuster, and then do we have other hands?
I've got very good friends that have a pot-bellied pig, and they do have a goat also, and they live out in the country, because just as our ordinance says, they cannot be in the city. So I have this issue with this, I'm sorry, that if I have a goat and a pig that I consider pets, after they reach seven months old, you have to make a determination of who has to go. So I'm sorry about this ordinance that you would have to pick one of your pets and say, okay, this one has to leave, and I don't like it about that, so I just, no, I can't. Because I know that people that want to have things like that have moved out in the country, and I think that's the best thing, is if you want to have some pets that are a little different. See, the worst thing is, in the ordinance, you could have a dog and a couple of cats and maybe some things like that, but they couldn't be anything else, because they have an ordinance against it. So, no.
Okay.
I don't want to have to say, oh, you have to pick one. One has to leave now, that it's been here almost a year.
Any other comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor O'Doherty.
But isn't that the way it's already written, that you can't have, you don't have more than a quarter acre, you can't have livestock as it is right now? So this isn't changing that, in reference to what Counselor Schuster just said.
I think you're correct. To clarify, we have limitations on the adult and the, you know, the juvenile animals with them, but the juveniles were unlimited on the number that they could have, and so we're trying to specify to make sure that we don't have, you know, just someone that decides that they're going to have a major production going on in the city limits. So we're narrowing down the exact numbers that we can have as far as adults and juvenile animals within the city limits. Hopefully, I stated that correctly. Okay. Any other comments? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate our staff, they always have a much more direct view and experiences with these things, and they come up with policies they want to bring forward to us for us to consider. They have background on it. I don't know, I haven't heard of, other than chickens and maybe ducks, I'm not familiar with anybody keeping, I don't know everybody in town, but I don't know that many people keeping livestock in their yard. I don't know how much this comes up. I appreciate that, you know, and again, I'm sure the staff may have more insight on that. Maybe it doesn't come up that much, maybe more than I would think, but I appreciate their, working with the other council member to come up with an amendment here. The comment I want to make is that I doubt we will hear about this again, but if it becomes problematic, we probably will. And then we may have to go back and say, well, that really wasn't the intention, we were just trying to make it a little more flexible for people, for, you know, livestock pets that they wanted to keep. I don't think we'll be able to amend this for every possible scenario and situation. My guess is that we probably won't hear about it again. I doubt there'll be a boom in multiple pig ownership situations within city limits, but you know, we'll see. And Mr. Mayor, make that comment by way of, we could probably come up with a lot of scenarios that we might think we need an amendment for, but I think, let's see how it goes, and let's see if, as written, if it's amended, that that satisfies everyone, including our staff.
All right. I think there might be an amendment for three roosters, because that might be a little bit noisier than what someone would want, but I understand what you're bringing up. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Pierce?
Yeah, I mean, the whole intent was to allow a forage project, you know, and the reality of it is, if you are kind enough to adopt a orphan baby goat or baby sheep, it's going to cost you more to buy the milk, to take care of that animal than you could ever get by the time they're seven months old and you send them, you have them for groceries or send them off to be groceries. I mean, bottom line is, it's expensive to take care of little, little animals.
Any other comments from the council? Okay, we're going to vote on the amendment, and then we'll go back to the ordinance if it passes as amended, so roll call on the amendment.
Okay. Harrington?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes. I'm sure there's a thousand different scenarios on them.
He's changed his mind.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses, zero nos.
Okay, so that amendment has passed, let's move back to the main motion as amended. Are there any questions, comments regarding the main motion from the council? Anything from the public on the main motion now as amended? Okay, one more chance in the council. Seeing none, we'd like to have a roll call.
Okay. Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses, zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, say thank you. So that item now moves on to the third reading, and so this item will be on the consent agenda for our next city council meeting. Item number 11, Counselor Harrington.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to award the bid for the UV replacement project to Lillard and Clark, Wyoming, in the amount of $579,000, along with contingency of $57,900, for a total amount of $636,900 to approve the contract and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
Okay, there's a second by Counselor Pierce. Our Public Works Director, Works Webb, will introduce this to us.
Thanks, Honorable Mayor, City Council, excuse me. Ultraviolet disinfection is a process used in the treatment of wastewater. As the water passes by the UV lights, microorganisms that are remaining and they become neutralized. The disinfection process is required by EPA and DEQ. The current system we have in place now is over 20 years old, and the manufacturer is after the... is, after this year, is not going to support that anymore. Basically, technology has advanced so far that they can't support it anymore. So we, we've had the, this budgeted for a couple of years now and, and because that support system is ending at the end of this year, we've, we need to move forward. Um, on May 11th, staff solicited bids in accordance with the city purchasing policy. Uh, two bids were received and opened on June 4th. Velocity constructors from Colorado came in at $565,128. Lillard and Clark from Wyoming was at $579,000. I mentioned the state they were from because Wyoming state's stature requires a 5% preference for in-state build, bidders. Uh, since Lillard and Clark's bid was within 5% of Velocity's bid, staff is recommending approval of the contract for the in-state bidder, Lillard and Clark. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Any council doesn't have questions, any questions or comments from the public? Back to the council, any comments from the council? Roll call.
That's all right.
Oh, no, just a second. Councilor Weaver?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lillard and Clark, they're a wastewater treatment, that's pretty much what they do is projects for wastewater treatment, is that right, Mr. Webb? Sorry, I don't know if you want to come all the way back here, a nodle suffices.
Honorable Mayor, Councilor Weaver, um, I was talking with Cal briefly back there. Cal's the utility division manager. He said they're predominantly in the wastewater and water treatment, uh, industry.
So the reason I asked the question, Mr. Mayor, is just, probably communities don't have that many of these projects that come up that often. Are these guys, uh, this company, have they been able to provide you guys sufficient background with construction of these kinds of UV treatment systems in recent times?
Honorable Mayor, Councilor Weaver?
Last couple of years?
Yeah, that's, that's vetted in the, in the bidding process. Um, both companies actually have a lot of experience in, in the treatment of wastewater and the UV. You, you are correct, it doesn't come up very often. Uh, these systems last 20 to 30 years, but a lot of this, a lot of those systems were put in 20 years ago and so there's a lot throughout the country, there's a lot of replacements happening right now. Because 20 years ago, 30 years ago, they were, it was a new technology.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for-
Councilor Harrington?
Uh, one question real fast. Is this new system gonna have any sort of energy efficiency over the previous system that we might recoup some of this cost, since we're pursuing energy efficiency in all of these systems moving forward?
Yeah. Honorable Mayor, Councilor Harrington, um, the new equipment actually has turn-down capability to match the flow of the water. So as the flow decreases through the plant, the, the lights will, can actually dim to match that flow, which saves on energy and, uh, extends the life for the bulbs. That technology, they say, basically can save you up to 30% energy savings, um, which is significant, uh, for the plant out there. I did some rough calculations and if we realize that 30%, we're looking at savings of around $288,000 over that 20-year period.
Great. Thank you, Mayor.
Good question. Thank you.
He was ready.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the council? I think we've already asked the public, so let's go to roll call.
Okay. O'Doherty?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
And Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, that item, that item passes and so that award will be made. Item number 12, Councilor McKinney.
I move to approve an amendment for the South Laramie Drainage Master Plan Professional Services Agreement with Wood, Environment, and Infrastructure Solutions Incorporated to conduct a Spring Creek Flood Plant Update in the southern portion of the city of Laramie for a total amendment, amendment amount of $205,335 plus a contingency of $20,533.50 for a total contract amount not to exceed $225,868.50 and transfer $55,868.50 from the Spring Creek Cabion Rip Wrap Project in the citywide storm drainage evolution and authorize a mayor and city clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilor Pierce. Uh, City Engineer Eric Japp.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, um, several years ago FEMA digitalized their maps and when the maps were digitalized, the, the floodplains were actually moved on, on several of the maps around Laramie. And this was, this occurred throughout the entire, um, country when the maps were digitalized. Uh, a few years ago, uh, we redid the Laramie River, um, that was remodeled, redelineated, and put in its correct location. And, uh, the amendment is the continuation of the Spring Creek. Uh, Spring Creek actually currently on the floodplain goes through Ridley's parking lot is where it's currently being shown. So, uh, there's some changes that need to be done with that. On, uh, May 5th of 2015, uh, we brought forward a amendment to the South Laramie Drainage Study, uh, to move the Spring Creek Channel and get that corrected. Um, this was added to the South Laramie Drainage Study because there was so much overlap of the two projects, it made sense to tie the two together. Uh, when we went forward with that, uh, we had discussions with FEMA as we put together that amendment, um, and that's how that original scope was created. Uh, when we submitted to FEMA, um, we received several comments back, um, on our submittal and required modeling of the entire channel. And then also permitting a levy that is currently unpermitted and that runs along 30th Street. Uh, the reason for this change is they had an internal, uh, policy change from when we had that discussion and when we actually submitted. And then, um, that wouldn't have been such a big deal, but then also the levy was unknown to both staff and FEMA that that was considered a levy. It was probably put in when Spring Creek was moved in the 20s or something like that and just never was officially certified through Spring Creek. Um, so that, that's what the change, um, coming forward. So, um, to address FEMA's comments, um, staff asked Wood to put together, um, what it would cost and a scope of work. Uh, Wood has done several of these, um, throughout the state and the nation, so they, uh, put together, based on that previous work, uh, they also had several discussions, uh, with FEMA on what it would take to address their comments. Uh, so that is what's kinda before you with the change order tonight. Uh, also as part of the, uh, scope, uh, we're, we have a, a TAP grant for a potential bike path that may actually run where that levy is proposed. So, um, as part of this work, we wanted to kinda combine that to save fees each time you submit to FEMA, it's over $8,000. So we wanted to combine that work, um, get planned for that, so that's all permitted and especially since we might be modifying that levy. And then with all that work, um, when the bridge was put in at 30th Street, we had some stabilization that needed to occur after that bridge was put in. Um, we've currently been trying to get that approved through FEMA since that bridge was put in. And that was part of the comments that came back and it was part of that original submittal as well. So that will be to do some slight modifications and get that, um, plan finally modified, tweaked to, uh, address those comments, so, uh, hopefully that kind of explains what of this full amendment is to the contract. And if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time.
Thank you.
Questions? Any questions from the public? Any comments from the council? Councilor Weaver?
Here I am again, Mr. Mayor. Um, are we pretty confident that we won't have to reconstruct the levy on 30th Street?
That's a bridge, I think.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, but I mean, if they're changing requirements at FEMA, often, maybe it's something we should be thinking about.
City Engineer.
Honorable Mayor, uh, Councilor Weaver, um, we, we really don't know at this time. There, there's a pretty in-depth analysis that's gonna have to be done, uh, to get it certified. And, and through that analysis, through geotech, through flows, everything else, uh, we'll know at that point in time. If it ends up coming to be, have to be reconstructed, I'll be back before you guys again to probably move forward with the design. The, the hope is that it's, um, currently adequate to be certified through lev, uh, through FEMA. And, and that's what our hope is, but you know, it, it's unknown at this time. It's, it's hard to include it into this scope of work because we don't know what it would take, um, because we have to gather information to begin with, so.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I'm the city manager and I will have memories as maybe some of the other council members will too about a berm and talking to FEMA about it regarding the flooding issue and, um, I don't have to remind anybody on council or city staff that, you know, nasty budget surprises are just that. I doubt that's cheap, nothing is, if we have to undertake that project, so I appreciate it.
Okay, any other comments from the council? Roll call.
McKinney?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses, zero nos, Your Honor.
Okay, so that item passes, now we move on to item number 13. Councilor Schuster.
Thank you very much. We have a ordinance here and the way it was written, we're gonna change it a little bit. Because when we bid this out, it was for the replacement of the bridge going over the railroad tracks. And the name of the bid, when we put it out, was the Harney Street Viaduct. A lot of people prefer the name Snowy Range Road Bridge, so you're gonna see that we're gonna substitute the name and it was also discussed at the end, beginning here. The title is Original Ordinance Number 2000, amending Chapter 15 dot 08 dot 040 dot D dot 3, small letter C, and map 15 dot 08 dot 060 dash 6 of the Laramie Municipal Code to describe the new location of the Gateway Overlap District Change from Curtis Street Viaduct to the Harney, excuse me, the Snowy Range Road Bridge and replace the map within the text. I move to approve Original Ordinance Number 2000 as recommended by the Planning Commission on first reading in accordance with the findings of facts, conclusions of law, and to set a public hearing for July 16th, 2019.
Second.
Oh.
It's a tie.
It's a tie. The motion's been made and I'll have Councilor Pierce as the second. Yes, if you could bring us up to anything new that we need to know regarding this item.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Uh, you're gonna have to excuse me if I mess up that name a couple of times. Um, but I do have one more correction on here, there's a typo, um, for under Section 15 08 040 D 3 C, it should be D 3 E. Um, that is my mistake, Curtis and Clark jumbled up in my head and so.
As long as the second approves, I accept your-
Thank you.
Correction.
Okay, so, um, who's the second? Is that okay? I mean, it's just a, it'll be corrected.
Wordsmithing.
It'll be corrected. This is the first reading of this ordinance and so it'll be corrected, but that's-
We'll fix it all for the second.
As, as you indicated.
Great, thank you. Um, so, both of these, the text amendment and the zoning amendment, obviously kind of float around the same project, um, but I will present the text amendment first, uh, of which, just the background of gateway overlay zones, um, they're, they're for aesthetic purposes, basically, bringing people into Laramie. It offers kind of a higher standard of landscaping, setbacks, materials, all that, so when visitors are coming into Laramie, first thing they see is something pretty, something nice, you know, better than just your general dirt lot. And so, basically with the implementation of a new gateway overlay zone, nothing has changed, I want to make that very clear, that if your lots are 3, if your lots are 2, this has no effect on it at all. Basically, it has no effect on residents at all. Um, it's only industrial, commercial, um, more setbacks, 25% more landscaping, uh, units required, um, and just kinda different fencing materials and objects like that. But it won't affect anyone's use or just, yeah, overall zoning. Uh, and so for the text amendment, um, the previous text read as Snowy Range Road from Interstate 80 to the westernmost boundary of the Henry D. Hodgman's addition of Snowy Range Road. The approximate location of this district is illustrated in map 15 08 0606, located in subsection, excuse me, 15 08 060C. Um, and the new text will read as, um, not Snowy Range Road, but Snowy Range Road Bridge. Uh, Snowy Range Road from Interstate 80 to the easternmost boundary of the Simple 5 subdivision, excluding the Interstate 80 interchange right-of-way. The approximate location of this district is illustrated in map 15 08 0606, located in subsection 15 08 060C. We have had a number of public comments prior to city council, uh, coming up to Planning Commission and it was generally in reference to landscaping along Snowy Range Road as it has newly been built. Um, one concern was based around the amount of dead trees, um, in the area. That has been remedied, they are supposed to be replacing the, I forget the number of dead trees, but it, it wasn't a majority of any which, but, um, yeah. And so, uh, we move to recommend that city council approve an amendment to Chapter 15 08 040 D 3 E, um, and map 15 08 0606 of the Unified Development Code according to the findings of fact and conclusions of law.
Okay.
If you have any questions, I'm here.
Any questions? Councilor Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious, uh, why we're moving this from Curtis Street to Harney Street. I mean, I understand that that's both gateways, I'm just wondering why they aren't both gateways, I guess, maybe?
Right, and they, they are, that was the kinda text change, um, with changing it from a C to the E in the subsection, is that if, uh, C under the current code is Curtis Street and E is Snowy Range Road, which was this previous section. And so what was the Clark Street Viaduct is actually termed the Snowy Range Road, uh, section of this overlay district.
Okay, and that makes more sense.
Yeah, completely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Anything from the public? Any comments from the council?
I'm just gonna leave this up here.
All right, let's go to roll call.
Harrington?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
I'm recusing myself from this.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That is eight yeses, zero nos, and one recused.
Okay, so that item passes, now we move on to the next item, which is item number 14, and that's also Councilor Schuster.
Thank you. Very, very similar to the last one. The title is Original Ordinance Number 2001, amending the city of Laramie official zoning map to show the new location of the Gateway Overlay District Change from Curtis Street Viaduct to Snowy Range Road Bridge. I move to approve an original ordinance, amending the city of Laramie's official zoning map to show the new location of the Gateway Overlay District Change from Curtis Street Viaduct to Snowy Range Road Bridge.
Thank you.
Second.
Not at that time.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second by Councilor Pierce. Any further information you have regarding what's on this?
Uh, Mayor Council, there's, there's really not much. Um, under Attachment A, y'all see where the new zone is going and, uh, just kind of as, how that map was made is basically, it's a 200- Mayor, council, there's really not much. Under Attachment A, you'll see where the new zone is going, and just kind of as how that map was made is basically, it's a 200-foot buffer from the center line of Snowy Range Road. And so that goes from the end of the new viaduct all the way down to the I-80 interchange. But that's it. No new information other than a change of the zoning map. But here for any questions if you do have them.
Any questions from the council? Anything from the public? Any comments from the council? Seeing the unroll call.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
O'Doherty recused herself. Pierce?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero no's, one recused.
Okay, and so item number 14 passes. We now go to item number 14A. Vice Mayor Gabriel, if he would introduce 14A.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move council approve Resolution 2019-55 to appoint two board members, Brady Hammond and Brad Jackson, to the Albany County Tourism Joint Powers Board. For terms expiring June 30th of 2021, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilor Gabriel, Vice Mayor Gabriel, and seconded by Councilor Schuster. Is there any discussion regarding item number 14A? Councilor Pierce?
Yes. You know, for the tourism board, it's my understanding that the scope of their work should be, you know, inclusive and welcoming for all populations. And sadly, of late, it's been my observation that that has not been the case. So I strongly support the appointment of one of the members, but not the other, and therefore I'm going to be voting no.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Weaver.
Is it typical to vote on appointees to boards and commissions as a block?
Do you have a consent agenda?
No. If that's where we've placed them before, but I mean, as opposed to one at a time? Do we have precedent or tradition, if you want to call it that, in the council of doing them in groups as opposed to one at a time?
Okay. Our practice has been, as we have appointments to one of our boards, commissions, or committees, is that we put them forward as the number of openings. And if there is an amendment, then a name will be removed, and then they will vote, you know, on them separately. But.
Well, you've addressed my question then, Mr. Mayor, because I was afraid that Councilor Pierce was going to be procedurally placed in a position where, in order to oppose one nomination, she had to oppose both.
Councilor Pierce certainly can make an amendment to separate and vote on these individuals one at a time if that would be her preference.
No guesses as to her preference, but that was my procedural question, because that would cause an issue. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, any other? Councilor Gabriel?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to point out to council that the mayor and I sat down with five applicants, including the two that are recommended here tonight, and we had five very qualified applicants for this board. I would like to appoint all five if we could. But we have two openings from the city on this joint powers board, and I feel very comfortable with the two that we have recommended for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Stalder.
This is the first time I've encountered this, but I'm not sure how I'm supposed to vote on a candidate one way or the other without interviewing them. I feel comfortable with, you know, people from the city council who have an interest in that board recommending candidates and taking their recommendations. But I don't know how I could vote for a candidate that I haven't interviewed or don't know, or unvote them.
Vote against.
Obviously, that's a great question, but let me just mention this. As you know, we have 26 boards, committees, and commissions, and if we interviewed every one of them, you wouldn't have a life.
Absolutely. I don't want to interview every one of them. I want to, but I don't know.
And another thing, if you, you know, anytime that anyone wants to, you know, you're welcome to attend and be a part of the interview process. The recommendations has usually been, you know, the council brings this forward, and if you want to reopen them so that you can, you know, spend more time with them, you can certainly do that. This is just the recommendation that's brought forward, and that's been the way we've done it. Now, we're going to have a work session on how we form committees, how we, you know, how we work with boards, commissions, and things like that. And so that would be a great topic for you to bring forward on a better way for us to really get a grasp of who is being appointed or being recommended for these positions. If you want to make a suggestion to, on this specific appointment, you're certainly welcome to do that.
I have no input on the specific appointment. I just, I guess I'm asking how this goes procedurally. If, you know, I don't know, I would take the recommendations that you guys vetted the candidates, but I don't know how to just approve one and not approve the other.
And again, on the 13th of August, we're going to have a work session.
Okay, sorry.
And obviously, we're looking for ways to have the process work out better. I, you know, I know on some of the committees, we have three members that, you know, sit and interview, and others we have two. And obviously, with the large number of committees that we have, it's almost impractical for us to do it any other way than what we've done. But we are always open to new ideas and ways that we can do this. Do you have, do you have your hand up for a new idea?
No, I'd like to add a word of caution, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for recognizing me. I'm not here to be quiet. We've talked about it a lot, haven't we? Even in the limited amount of time compared to some others around the days here, that we've talked about it a lot. We never used to have a requirement for three. Then it was decided that some boards and commission positions were so important that we should at least have three. And that was fine, and I supported that at the time. As the mayor said, the only real way to do that would be to have all of us there, which is impractical. I don't know that there is going to be a real solution to that problem, because it's one that I've had some concerns with in the past, through you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilor Stalder, for various reasons. Most of the time, 99% of the time, I'm nothing but grateful to people that want to volunteer their time for the service on these boards and commissions. But every now and then, a council member will raise a concern, or there might be a concern, or it may just be an issue of people have been there for a long time, and there are other new and good people, and you're always struggling with, well, do we reappoint this person that we know is great, but has also been there for 15 years? And how do you address that? And there just aren't a lot of perfect solutions to that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor Gabriel?
And I would also like to point out that some boards, like this tourism board, two terms are the max. And so one of the members that were on the agenda tonight that has been proposed for appointment is, he's already served one term, and his time will be up this next time if he's approved. And so, you know, that isn't always coming into play on every commission and board, but this particular one it does.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments from the council?
Two years.
Anything from the public? Yes. Judy, if you'd come forward and give us your name and cover your badge.
I can wear my badge for this one. This one, people in this group might think it's legitimate. My question is, that was just brought up, is how, should there be a way of limiting the people, limiting terms for some of these boards and commissions? I don't know. I mean, this is an honest, not so much, I think you should do it this way, but this is a question. Is this something that could be possibly explored during a work session, or has it been previously explored and this is the consensus, and I just don't know what the division is. That's all.
Thank you, Judy. Sign there. Partially to answer your question is that we have talked about term limits. Some of the boards, commissions, and committees do have term limits, and we, you know, we follow those, so we know that. That's something that, when we meet on the 13th of August, we're going to discuss, you know, whether or not that's reasonable for more. And, you know, obviously, there's always a way to improve what we're doing, and so we'll be looking at that.
And then there's always the argument of if it's not broken, why?
Yeah, don't fix it.
You go both ways.
Thank you. And I want to echo what Vice Mayor Gabriel said. The candidates that come before us are exceptional. We, I am always gratified by the contributions from the community and the quality of candidates that we have that come and volunteer their time and knowledge and expertise to serve on these different committees. This city truly is run by volunteers, which, and there's such a great pool of people that we talk to all the time. As was mentioned, we wish we could appoint them all. And hopefully, you know, we encourage them to, I always try to encourage them, please look at the other list and come back and apply for another position, because sometimes we, you know, it's such a tough decision for us to say who will and who will not be on the committee, because we only have so many openings. Anyway, any other comments, questions before we vote on this item? Roll call.
Okay. O'Doherty?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Harrington?
I'm recusing myself from this vote.
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Okay, that is seven yeses, one no, and one recused.
Okay, thank you. So that item passes, and those two individuals will be appointed to the Downtown Development Authority. Now, at this time, we have public.
Tourism board, Mr. Mayor.
Tourism board, what did I miss that?
Yeah.
Consent agenda had DDA on it.
I thought we just did that.
We just did the tourism.
We, you.
Are we doing both? Okay, who's Gabriel?
No, no.
No, one was approved on the consent, point of order. One was approved on the consent agenda, one was pulled off first in discussion. Yeah?
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Are we finished with the regular agenda then?
Yes, we are.
Yes.
So now we move to public comments on non-agenda items. We welcome what's left of our public, invite you to come forward if you have anything to, thank you for attending. Thank you for your interest. Item number 16 is consideration for future council work session topics.
This is pretty full.
Yeah, we've got a lot. We do. We're going to get some of them out of the way.
All right. I guess I'll ask our city attorney. Can I make suggestions for future work session topics? Is that, can I, I can't make motions, but can I suggest a topic for a future work session?
Mayor, you nag.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think the two previous mayors before you certainly didn't have a problem with it. I don't know why you would.
In fact, they kept this so.
Yeah, they're part of the reason that list is full.
I would just make a comment. I met for a couple of hours today with somebody that has some great ideas for us to be more energy efficient. But after talking to our city manager, I think we need to complete the study that's being done for us at this time on energy. But there is a great presentation, and I think it'll be, it will be shared with other people on the council, and then when it's appropriate, I would like to bring that forward for us to consider. It's a PowerPoint presentation. I think it has a lot of merit. City manager?
Mayor, your municipal emissions study presentation is now scheduled for August 27th, so perhaps in September, the work session you're suggesting.
It might be. And again, I'm not, I'm not saying to put it on the agenda right now, but it's something that I think we ought to all be seriously taking a look at.
If everything goes as scheduled, I think getting that on September would be okay, because we don't want to have it too far apart from that, right, Mr. Mayor? It's a related topic, so.
We're kind of all fresh. Anything else from anybody to add to our list of items for work sessions? Okay. Councilor Pierce, you have item number 17.
Yes, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjournments indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We, all opposed?
No.
We have one opposed, but you're in the minority, so we are adjourned.